I think we're all here, are we? Missing. We're not expecting them.
We're not charter people?
We're not expecting them, okay. Perfect. Did you cut it off?
Well, welcome, everybody. It's good to see our charter friends here tonight. We're glad you're joining us for this conversation of some of the statutory change. You know, my, I'm new here, so you can all correct me, but my impression has been is that there's been a rather peaceful, supportive relationship between the charters and the school district. And we really haven't had any major funding issues or conflicts as long as I've been here. And I've only been here a year, so, you know, but we seem to have a pretty good relationship. Now, as the legislature is likely to do, they passed a new law, 1375, and that has required that our staff work with our board and re-present charter funding because of the provisions of the statute. So our purpose tonight is not what should we walk out of here and know what we're going to do with funding, but our purpose tonight should be so we get the various viewpoints of what this says, what it doesn't say, what we think it means, and then the board in the future will be making a decision around how we do charter funding. So, again, thank you for being here, and I'd like to turn it over to Leslie Stafford and Melissa Barber to do a brief, brief overview of what the law did and what it says and why we need to look again at our funding at the charter schools. So, Leslie and Melissa.
Okay. So, we have until 6:00, and then the board will start their regular meeting, and they have to reconfigure the room, so we're on a tight time deadline. And I'll just take two minutes to refresh the board's memory. We had a work session, well, it was probably a couple months ago now, talking about an overview of 1375. I passed out the handout that we prepared for that previous work session, but we're looking at the district's total mill levy available funding and how we're going to address House Bill 1375, which requires the board to decide and post a plan by July 1 of how we're going to distribute that money to the charter schools. And so there are essentially three big options. One would be to just do a straight share with existing and future charters, so any charter school authorized by the district at 100 percent. It could go down to 95 percent. And then the other end of the spectrum would be allocating certain levels of funding through district programs. And then the charter schools would participate on a per-student basis, to the extent their students participated in those same programs. And so the handout talked about some, you know, potential ways of allocating money to programs. And that would require a lot more work with Leslie's team in terms of how that type of plan could work. And then the third option would be kind of a hybrid, where maybe some money went toward a plan and the rest was distributed to straight per pupil. So, again, we've got this time crunch of figuring this out by the end of June and having the board act on that and get something in place. There is discussion about that there's an annual opportunity to look at that plan and make changes to it, and the statute provides for that, but you really need to have something in place by July 1 to have something to amend later. So you're not necessarily committing boards, you know, for all time.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that enough to kind of-
Yes, I think that's great.
Get back into the conversation.
That's a great reminder. And I think two weeks ago, maybe, I went to Peak to Peak and met with most of the people who are at this table, and we talked a little bit about, I think it was framed under a summit or a charter summit, maybe a charter meeting. And I just wanted to thank all the charter community for setting that up, and I'm glad you're here. So I think one of our goals today was also just to listen from the charter community. You came to our work session and kind of listened to us discuss and our questions, and I thought we would hear from you, because we do have a short time first, and then maybe would the board be interested in then asking questions and discussing a little bit? Does that sound like a plan?
Okay, great. Adam, I think you had some things that you came in with.
Yeah, well, I would just love to just say some things on behalf of our group. We have provided the board members with the letter, and I'd like to just read some excerpts from the letter, just so that our position and our desires are clearly stated. So first of all, I want to thank you for directly including charter school leaders in the current discussions regarding implementation of this House bill. I was in attendance at the 11618 special session and observed that you are beginning your deliberations around this bill. And I've been discussing this issue with charter leaders for over a year, and I've also been discussing it with cabinet members of BVSD for that same time. I want to ensure that the school board understands the interests of our charter school community. We are really proud to be authorized by BVSD, which has, for 20 years, provided an equitable share of mill levy funds to all public school students regardless of their school of attendance. Mill levy funding is of vital importance to charter schools, our charter school community. BVSD voters expect this funding to be shared with all schools, including charter schools. And the charter leaders respectfully request that BVSD continue its current practice of mill levy funding to charter schools with the full inclusion of Justice High in the same manner, so they'd have to be added in, because currently they don't get all of the mill levy funds, anything after 2010, they were not included in. In no case should the mill levy funding to charter schools be reduced. Indeed, nothing in the current statute prevents BVSD from continuing its current practice. And in doing so, BVSD would continue to be lauded across the state as a positive example of a district that by choice, not by legislative mandate, treats its charters equitably. School leaders statewide have been encouraged by the state legislator to look at BVSD as a model in this area, and we hope that the board and the administration see the benefit in continuing with this exemplar role in the mill levy distribution. BVSD would be joining, from what we hear, Jefferson and Douglas Counties, who are planning to do the same. As far as the intent of the law, it's our understanding that the charter league supported this law to address inequitable distribution of mill levy override funding in those school districts across the state that had not previously shared the revenues with students attending charter schools. The intent was not to reduce funding to charter schools, but rather to create parity in the funding of public school students. Even the 95 percent provision was not intended to reduce from full funding. That was just leeway in terms of whether certain mill levy override components applied. So we really do share the district's sense of responsibility to increase resources to support achievement of traditionally underserved student populations, and we're very proud of the programming we offer already in our charter schools to produce high achievement and high-growth results with the traditionally underserved student populations. Mill levy override funding is a vital part to that continued success. We value our partnership with the district and look forward to continuing to ensure that all students in our district receive the academic and non-academic services that they need and deserve. We do understand that the law requires that any changes to the distribution of mill levy funds be applied equally to all schools in the district, not just to charter schools. So in summary, each student in the district, whether in a charter or a traditional school, is equally deserving of full and fair mill levy funding. Mill levy funding exists for all students. All current and future schools, like Meadowlark and whichever school comes next, should be getting mill levy funding. Any changes to the distribution of mill levy funding should be applied equally to all schools in the district, not just to charters. And we respectfully request that you continue the best practice that you have for these 20 years with the inclusion of Justice High.
Did any other one, anyone else want to speak from the charter leadership? Kelly?
Well, I mean, I echo, and we drafted this letter together, so that my thoughts are concluded, or they're included in this memo. I think, as Sam and I, and I think a lot of people go to these charter conferences and so forth, Boulder Valley has always, for the, you know, at least in my tenure, has been held up as a model of a district that is, one that's set apart from a lot of districts that do not share at all. So the inequities across the state are pretty significant, and so Boulder Valley has always been in a class by itself in terms of how it shares charters. I mean, we're the envy of schools in Carter Springs, for example, in where they don't get any of the mill levy funding. So we were very pleased to see the law pass, and I know there's differences of opinion here in this room about that law, but I think it's fair to say charter schools serve a population of students that represents, it's a parental choice to send your student to a charter school. Boulder Valley voters, of which our parents, our members, have voted in these mill levies and the overrides, and so to be looking at a way to reduce funding makes, really doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't align with Boulder Valley's stated values of equity and excellence. And so, I mean, we're here to learn and talk, but we're also very interested in keeping our current level of funding so that we can continue to do the things that we do.
Questions or comments?
I just wanted to say, we really enjoy our relationship with BVSD as one of the older charter schools in the district, and especially the reciprocity that comes with that. I think we learn a lot from our, through our relationship with the district, and conversely, the district has just modeled one of their brand-new schools after our school, and has learned a lot from our practice. And I think that that reciprocity speaks well of how we've been funded and what we do to try and innovate and continue to learn from each other, and I think that we'd all be well-served to continue that and to let us continue our programming the way we have it, because it is serving the community. I know all of our schools are sought-after places for kids to attend, and we work hard to wrangle our budgets in the way that helps kids get what they need. Our school has a really high percentage of special education students, and I don't know about how different allocation plans might work, but I do know that some of the only research that exists to try and equate funding with populations is around special education, and that's about, it's about twice as much. And so we really work hard to serve the students who are in our school. Thanks.
I'd like to make a brief comment. My name's Ron Warsnick. I'm a Summit board member and a parent of a child at Summit Charter School and one at Horizons, and I also have another child that's in a non-charter school, Fairview High. And I value the choice that charter schools offer in the community. And as a parent, my, and a taxpayer, my expectation is that the district would fund all these schools equally. I think there's a great opportunity in long history here, as Adam mentioned, funding these mill levies at 100 percent.
Questions, board members?
Did you all get this?
Yes.
And there's three options in there?
Yes.
Which of the three options come closer to what you guys are requesting?
So, it would be the last one. The last one is, I think it's the last one.
At least 95 percent distribution.
Where was it, the first one?
I think it's the last one. I don't remember. Number three is the closest.
Yeah, so, we've had an opportunity to look at some numbers around the budget, and I'm not sure if you guys have looked at those numbers as well. What really, I think what's critical for us is that funding does not decrease, and the district has run some very interesting numbers, which include, funding does not decrease, and Justice High is included. Those are kind of our top priorities. And there's actually the ability to do that with the numbers that have been put on the table, with a slight variation. 100 percent would be ideal.
I can pass this around. Did you guys get these?
You emailed them.
Yeah, but here, we had addressed them a little bit.
We would definitely prefer straight funding per pupil and not any kind of distributed plan. We think that the past practice is in line with the distributed, straight per pupil funding. That's the simple thing to do. The plan is very complicated around the district's budget. It could be very complicated around ours as well, and also could affect other schools' budgets. But we don't want the funding to go down, so 100 to 95 percent in terms of the numbers that have been put forward would be adequate slash desirable.
Right, and just what you're looking at, so that I think you all received this by email, and we did talk about it yesterday when we met with a few of the charter representatives. The pink box at the top is the current allocations that the district gives out to the charters, and this is just the revenue side. It's 6.6 million. And then the purple box is if we trued up all of the current overrides to 100 percent allocation, and that's where you can see, for example, Justice High, who hadn't been in existence when we passed these other overrides. District practice has been not to share overrides with charter schools that aren't in existence when we passed them, but with the new statute, we will share the same with Justice High, all of the past overrides, as with our other charters. And so you can see there that truing up our current charters, we think, would be about half a million dollars to get everybody to the 100 percent of all the levies. And then you can see the different renditions there.
A couple of things about Peak to Peak. We have, we're unusual from the other charter schools in that we have building debt, $23 million in building debt. So our annual debt service is about 1.45 million. And I know it's been said that we do get charter school construction funding. We do. It's less than 200,000. That applies to that 1.5 million dollars in annual debt service. So that still places us at about $1,000 per student in reduced funding, essentially, compared to traditional schools in Boulder Valley, which we've been happy to make work for our school, but that's been very doable with the 100 percent funding of mill levy overrides. I don't think that the law is intended to take money away from schools that were already being shared with, and I'm a little concerned that it's being interpreted that way. And I also think that our contracts are not in conflict with the law, so I don't see how this statute would take, would supersede our existing contracts with the district. These things have been shared in previous meetings, and I just wanted to address that. One other thing, our average teacher salary is more than $12,000 less than Boulder Valley's average teacher's salary, so taking away money puts us even in a more difficult situation to attract and retain teachers.
I would also add for Boulder Prep, who also has debt service, and Lily couldn't be here tonight, that she prepared some information for you guys, and her perspective was that, you know, her school is 97 percent high-risk students, and she does understand that those kind of students need more resources. The current model of mill levy funding aligns with equality. She kind of drew up a sameness and fairness thing that you can't see, but I thought it was kind of cool. And we were asked to sort of think about equity for this conversation. And she said, "In our efforts to reach equity, I don't want to take away opportunities for any other students in BVSD. Let's keep all charter mill levy funding equal and find other ways to reach equity for students who need additional supports," specifically pointing to the district's re-engagement grant, which will end on the 19th of June, excuse me, June 2019. Currently, this grant funds re-engagement specialists at Boulder Prep at .8 FTE, Justice at .8, Rappahoe at .2, and Halcyon at .2. And the personnel that they've hired has made a significant impact at her site, and losing that personnel would be devastating. So I think there are mechanisms to serve traditionally underserved students other than the planned options that might exist in this House bill. I also would say that, as a whole, our districts are quite representative, or, excuse me, our five charter schools are representative of the entire district in the span that the district serves. So while sometimes you might look at one school and say they only serve a certain population, we definitely run the entire gamut in terms of the students we serve. So we serve the highest at-risk students, 97 percent. Both Boulder Prep and Justice High, 97 percent at-risk students. That's 88 percent free and reduced lunch at Justice High. That's the highest in the district. And 35 percent free and reduced at Boulder Prep. And Boulder Prep has 9 percent sped, Justice High has 23, Horizon says 12. Summit and Peak to Peak have less, at 3 to 5 percent on a given year. And our FRL at Summit and Peak to Peak is also lower, 5 to 8 percent, but so are numerous schools in the district. Approximately 10 schools in BVSD, including large schools like Fairview, share our exact same demographics. We also serve a disproportionately high number of tag students. Summit has 40 percent tag, and Peak to Peak has 26. So when the parents of this district are looking around for alternatives for their students and wanting to know where can our students go for tag education, they come to us, and those students are expensive, and some of them are II tag students. And so we have a lot of programming that we need to provide to meet that subgroup as well.
I just have a question, because I am familiar a little bit with Summit, Peak to Peak, and in full disclosure, the statewide parent coalition, an organization that I was working with, no longer working with, did work with Peak to Peak for a while, and I was very impressed in terms of what they were trying to do with their Latino families in the school. And I was also a director, I guess, if you will, of a charter school in Boulder Valley that went out of business way in the early years, because I think if the funding would have been like it is now, that particular charter would probably still be in business, because at that time, I think we're getting like about 85 percent. And then you had to purchase all the services from the district and all of that, so it was just like bad news. And then, and then we had to rent the building and everything else like you all have to do, so. So it was not, it was not a good time to be a charter school at that time, but I also recognize that we had charters at that time that were doing the same work. Obviously, you probably had a lot, a much bigger, more opportunities to raise dollars within your charter communities than the one that I was running, because we didn't have a whole lot of affluent people in that particular charter school. My question is, the enrollment at the charters, if you were to give me a breakdown at Summit and also at Peak to Peak and maybe even at Justice High or any other charters, how many are kids from our district and how many are not from the district that are attending the charters now?
Sure. Well, Summit has never had an out-of-district student in 20 years. We always fill up with first-choice in-district students. And I believe the average for BVSD is?
Eight, 8 percent.
Eight percent? And I don't think Horizons has out-of-district students, is that right, Lauren?
I think we might have one right now.
One, okay. So-
Moved out, who was enrolled and then moved away.
I do think that perhaps Justice and Boulder Prep have a few.
Justice High has about 32 percent. Peak to Peak has 31 percent, and Boulder Prep has 41 percent out-of-district students.
Yeah.
And our issue is driven by our location. I mean, we're a mile from the boundary of the district, and we don't get choice over who elects to come to our school. I suppose the district could impose, you know, new OE rules, which we would be happy with, but we're also bringing, in the past, it was looked at as a positive to bring in kids from the outside to help a district that wasn't growing, and it's unfortunate that it's viewed as a negative now. Broomfield has an even higher out-of-district rate than we do, but all the schools on the eastern edge of the district have a much higher out-of-district rate, and it speaks to the quality of Boulder Valley schools. People want to come here, and I think it's something that the board should be proud of, that people want to come here.
Well, I would add, I mean, so if you calculate the amount of money that the out-of-district kids are bringing in, that's $18 million roughly, give or take. That's not something to sneeze at. I mean, that's a significant portion of your budget, and so I think it should be viewed as a positive thing. And for my part, when I'm looking around at my students, I don't care where they live. I mean, they're our students, and we're taking care of them, we're giving them the programming. It doesn't matter to me where they live, and I don't think it should matter to everybody in this room. I mean, I understand the argument that those tax dollars are coming from Boulder Valley voters, but there are a lot of Boulder Valley voters who are paying those taxes that don't have children at all. So I don't, I'm not of the mind to discriminate against kids because of where they live. That's, I think it's-
I would also add that Meadowlark has about 25 percent out-of-district right now, I believe, in their first year.
Again, because of their location, so it's a transportation issue, it's proximity. It's a common sense thing, and it would be, we'd be drawing from the boundaries.
I would say that-
About 12.
12? Okay. I would say that you guys should get the state legislature to do something like they do in Montana, where there's law that allows students from out-of-district to pay tuition. And that takes care of your issue, because the kids come with a reasonable tuition, which is basically to make up for the levy shortfall.
So, Adam, that's the way Colorado used to be. Until they-
Well, let's go back.
Until they passed a law that said children could go anywhere they wanted to go. Right. Way back when, they used to charge tuition.
Well, the reason I was asking the question was not so much about that, okay? It's more around knowing that there are many Latino families that want to get into your charters. And they can't, because of the way the rules are.
Because of open enrollment, right? And you guys run the open enrollment process.
So when you said something about, well, if you want to tinker with the open enrollment process, what would that look like? I mean, what, what suggestion would you have in order to open it up so that we could get more Latino kids or free and reduced lunch kids or?
Can I ask, I would add, would you consider giving preference to in-district FRL students over out-of-district siblings, just for example?
Well, I mean, I would just say that you all are in charge of open enrollment. You guys are, we work with you to make the policies. We work with your office, so we, if you want to collaborate on something like that, we can sit down and do that.
I mean, we're doing efforts already-
We are.
-to reach out to the Latino community, as you're well aware, and we're seeing that number rise now. Same with sped. When we negotiated our last contract, that was an important thing to the district, and we've raised at least a percentage point in sped enrollment at Peak to Peak as well. So we're definitely open and would welcome those types of changes.
In Chevco, another district I used to work in, we put in the contracts frequently what kind of striving charters need to make towards diverse populations. So there'd be a percentage of free and reduced lunch, a percentage of special ed. It didn't always work, but they knew that's what they were striving for, and it was actually in the contract as to what the percentages would be.
Which, again, is driven by open enrollment, so-
Right.
-again, that's a controllable variable, which, let's talk.
Other questions?
Yeah, off the subject of open enrollment, but which services, I know I've, three of them, I've, I spent a lot of time in the schools training some of the teachers on the special ed things. So my question is, were any of those provided by the district, or do you pay those yourself for the-
Special ed or?
It's a combination. At Peak to Peak, we have a, is she a social worker, Patty? Yeah, so we have a district social worker, but the rest of our staff are paid by us.
Well, we also have a speech-language pathologist. We have her part-time, so she, we share her with other schools. So we have, yeah, and then the speech-language person and a physical therapist person.
They're all very part-time, though.
And they work for Boulder Valley.
The related service providers.
Yeah, right.
The districts allocated.
But all of our sped teachers are on our payroll.
Right, I knew that. I just wondered which services we were responsible.
And Donna, for our school, we hire our own special educators, and then we get a package deal with OTs and speech-language pathologists, and next year, our 7th and 8th grade classes, 25 percent of our students have IEPs. And on top of that, we have students with 504s and other needs that don't qualify them for IEPs. And we, charter schools were not included in the elementary counselor funding initiative, so we also have to pay for our own counselors, and we have to, at the middle level in a K-8, and also to try and mimic what the district's doing in terms of meaning student link for counselors in elementary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Leslie, so this number that's the difference would cost the district $500,000?
Right, to true up to the full 100 percent on all the overrides.
So, Adam, what you're asking is for the district to take on another half million dollars?
We're asking for our funding not to go down, and there are three scenarios that sh- And there are three scenarios on the sheet that, for the most part, don't, the top one, so there's two scenarios on the sheet that don't decrease funding, with the minor exception of Horizons, sorry, Horizons. And I'm not sure why that works that way. So the debt liability, it seems to you, would be between half a million and $144,000.
I would say that keeping the existing funding, but only bringing in Justice, which that option has not really been portrayed here. I think that cost would be, I'm going to estimate around $80,000...
That's true.
...to bring in Justice into those older MLAs.
Then can I ask one more?
Do it that way. I think if we're, we have to do, treat all the levies the same. And I've been digging through all the old ballot language and there's very few restrictions. And so I think it, we'd want to be consistent. But as Adam was saying, that if the district picked the 95 percent, everybody would still be gaining money, with the exception of Horizons. And that's because you were one of the only schools that we trued up. So through some prior contract negotiations, we actually did give you some of the override revenue that was before you existed. I haven't, that was a long time ago. And that's why they're getting the most, probably. You're getting the most of all the overrides at this point. And that's why theirs would go down just a little bit.
And then, am I wrong, but we have a policy where our schools share their fundraising...
The KH.
The KHs. And the charters don't do that?
No, we do that.
Okay, but nobody else does.
Horizons chooses to participate, the other charter schools don't.
What is that?
It's a KH gift policy where funds that are raised for staffing for K through eighth grade are, it's a 10 percent share with schools that are 30 percent of grade or free and reduced lunch.
Just for staffing? We don't use any fund dollars?
We don't either.
We don't either, yeah.
Was Justice or Boulder Prep, have they been, are they on a performance plan?
Are the what or...
Justice or Boulder Prep?
Alternative schools.
They'd have to be because it's state law. Right.
I have a question.
And I'm new, so I don't know the answer to this. So it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that none of the charters provide transportation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Then I'm curious why we give transportation funds to schools that don't provide transportation.
I was looking at that very topic today. And I also found it curious.
From the district's perspective, right. So when we passed the transportation override at 7.3 million, the district wanted to pass the transportation override in order to free up resources in the general fund. And so we don't actually share the transportation revenue with the charters, but we share like revenue from the general fund with them because the purpose of the override was to free up our general fund dollars to spend specifically on the computer replacement cycle.
Okay, so they're not getting transportation money. They're getting the equal amount from a different pot.
And when we use district buses, then we pay into the district transportation department. Thank you.
And also, we provide bus passes for all of our free and reduced kids at no cost to the students.
That's true.
I just wanted to kind of also mention that we spend a lot of resources on underserved populations. So we take the money that we have and we pay for our special ed specialists, but also we spend approximately $431,000 in direct student supports at Summit for English and math support and for special education. So this is about getting kids to the highest grade levels, highest achievement levels, and that's expensive. We then spend direct services approximately $70,000 for tag students and their needs. And then in indirect, we're about 124. So we're spending a good three-quarters of our mill levy total dollars on supports for, academic supports for students.
Sam or Shelley, any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, Leslie. I didn't know that that 10 percent that some schools, that the other schools share was just our own staffing. I thought it was around total fundraised amount.
It's not. It's not. It's specifically around dollars raised for staffing, right? And so then 10 percent of that is taken off the top and then shared. I think you just recently got the latest report on that, right? And shows how those dollars are shared. And they're given to schools that qualify for 30 percent of grade or free and reduced lunch for them to spend on anything they like. So field trips, those types of things, they can spend it on anything. But it's only a share on staffing, at the K8 level only.
So when they raise money, they're just raising money? And then it's whatever they allocate to staffing?
Right. So if they're hiring paras, and they run that all through our offices, carry, calculate. So let's say they're going to hire two paras and that's $60,000. Then we take 10 percent of that off the top and then it goes into the KH formula. But if they all fundraise $60,000 in playground equipment, there's no share on that.
Cindy, I wasn't, I didn't make myself clear on the performance plan. I know they all are. Is Boulder High or Justice High in jeopardy of losing their accreditation? Yes. You know, I'm going to have to do some checking, Donna. Not that I know off the top of my head, but let me see where we are in the cycle. I think we're just starting on the cycle. We're just starting? Kathy thinks we're just starting and we'll verify tomorrow.
Leslie, can I just keep asking you a question?
Sure, sure, yes.
So given what you just said about the transportation override...
Yes.
What is the logic behind offering that as an option that we not included then?
Well, it was one of the questions that came up with the board. It's an easy one to do. What I tried to do, because there's 1,000 different scenarios the board could look at, but I wanted to give the board a feel for what kind of dollars we were talking about. And the 7.3 million is easy to just pull out. If the board wanted to, for example, look at special ed, that would be more complicated. At early childhood, that would be more complicated. But we could certainly do that. It was just an easy one because technically, they don't offer transportation. And so the board could, if they wanted to change their mind, and not allocate those dollars unless a charter school offers their own transportation program. So it's just an example to give you a feel for the numbers.
So, I mean, the logic goes either way, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So does this have any relationship to this?
Well, it does to the extent that it shows you if we did the option three, 95 percent. And then the plan could have any variation that the board wanted to explore, right? It could be special ed, it could be early childhood, it could be... And we really hadn't had a chance to talk about that. We wanted to have an opportunity for the board to hear from the charters before we went down that road to see if the board is interested in pursuing that. And then we could run scenarios similar to this.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, so one way we define equity is like weighted funding for different populations. Would you support some kind of heading in that direction with your point?
I think if you're going to do that for all the schools in the district, I mean, we're, we have a similar model in that we program for the students that we have. So we hire teachers. We hire sped teachers based on how many students we have on IEPs. We hire a tag coordinator based on, well, she's completely overloaded. I mean, she's got 350 kids on her caseload. So we're able to do that at our micro level. So, I mean, if you're talking about backpacking certain mill levy funds, I'd want to ask, are you going to do that for all the schools? Are you going to be changing the way you do budgeting based on populations of different schools? So...
Interesting, because that's one of the memorandums in our union negotiation, is to backpack funds a little bit.
Future funds, right? Future funds? Additional funds?
It's not defined right now. I think they're, I think they're working on that.
I believe that's what we heard at the DLT last year, was there was a presentation about backpacking funds to resource traditionally underserved students. And it was made very clear at the presentation that they were talking about additional funds so that the people that they were talking to wouldn't be afraid of losing the funds that they have. And so redistribution of funds district-wide, whether you, you can do that with your general fund dollars already. We do that within our schools. We take the money and we distribute it to the students that need it. That was what I was just talking about. Six or $700,000 targeted to kids with special needs or with, you know, underserved populations so we can get high achievement growth levels. Now, the district can already be doing this, but they can't just, our feeling, especially with the mill levies and especially with the way the law is written, they cannot do that with just the charters alone. So we can't just say backpack to the charters and then everybody else will just put money into the central services and fill up our, you know, plans for ELL and for special ed. So if that becomes the dialogue, we're going to have a whole nother set of concerns around equity. Because other schools have demographics very similar to us. And if it starts to be backpacking funds with existing mill levy dollars, that's going to have a significant impact at the high schools. Fairview, there's just a whole list of schools would be significantly impacted that way. And it's a really hard formula to figure out, and I don't think the district even has a formula for that. So we're all in favor of the idea of supporting students and targeting funding to where the need is, but not if it depletes our budgets in this particular situation with the mill levy dollars.
Well, I would just encourage you all to think about, what are your big picture goals? I mean, and when I'm looking down the numbers here, it all seems relatively small compared to the budget that you all manage all day long. So what is the overall goal here? Is it to try to fix a problem that you have with charters? Because I, again, I go back to, you guys have been the leader and the model that other districts are, it was part of the thinking behind passing the law was, why can't everybody be like Boulder? So any step in a different direction, in my mind, would be a backward step to take because students are students. I mean, we are serving students that are in your district. They're your students as well. So I, you know, I'm not, I'm asking for your philosophical input on what are you trying to achieve with these conversations? And what was the intent of the law? And are those two things aligned?
I'll answer that just for a minute. I think the big change for us is that prior, we had local control over mill levy dollars. So we had some, and I don't think it was fair before because Justice High didn't get a share of the mill levies. That's not right. On the flip side, it wasn't an automatic that new charters would get money. So we will anticipate another charter application this year beyond Summit Academy. And I think that we know that whatever formula we have now will be applied to that school, you know, if it were to be approved. And it's more about, this is a change in our system. This is an automatic funding allocation. It will guide all of our future contracts. So I think we need to be thoughtful about it as this new legislation has come in. So I think for us, for me, that's what the discussion is about. It's a change. And when they have a change like that, you take the time to think about it and be thoughtful about it. Does anyone else like to chime in or...
No, and I view that explanation through the lens of equity. And we may, we may be getting to a shared definition. I'm not sure. But that's why I'm here to listen to you.
I guess I'd say I'm less philosophical about it and more concerned about losing $500,000 from our budget, which is already stretched.
Well, we're not asking for that.
No, we're not.
No, I'm just one scenario here.
You're not, I mean, that's what my, I go back to the students. I mean, are you saying that our students aren't your students?
No, I'm just saying that that's one that we, you know, typically we sit around and talk about other priorities. There's a whole list of things that there's right and wrong.
Right.
I think we all share concerns with our budgets. I mean, that's definitely a shared issue for all of our boards, right? So we all have, represent board members. And I think we kind of probably can find commonality of you don't want a big hit from your budget, we don't want a hit from our budget. And we do have a consent, we do have a pretty close to an option that doesn't provide a hit either way. I think if we could kind of massage something around that, we could have a good outcome.
Tina, I'd like to address your comment. Prior to this law, the district chose to share 100 percent, whether there was a new charter school coming or not. And why would this law change the district's philosophy of sharing equally with charter schools? Just because it now mandates a minimum of 95 percent? The district was already on the track of sharing 100 percent. So I don't see how that law really changes why the district would want to change from that model.
I think it has to do with the shift from local control. So I think it's, you take a pause when it just goes in automatically. And I'll be really perfectly frank, when the early childhood mill passed, I didn't realize that that didn't first go to preschool and then that the leftover got distributed. I had no idea. And I only found out a couple of years ago, two years that I was into the board, I didn't realize that the money that we received for FRL students were distributed equally through the general fund process, not dependent on how many FRL students you serve. So those were things that I had no idea. And so when we start looking at distribution type law, you know, you say, oh, I just didn't know. And so now I just want to understand the situation and then move forward. So I hope that's...
Well, I would agree that that is a shocking thing to find out as a board member or an administrator. When we kind of come to that conclusion, I think we're all surprised. And that is the funding system that we're in. But we have excellent schools that can make great results with students with the dollars that we have. And I would also say that, you know, we welcome to new school and to the district Metelark and so then there's funding there. And, you know, we believe as charter school leaders in school choice and that if the district has schools that are successful in their charters and our students are going there, then they deserve the full and fair funding from our taxpayers. Because our taxpayers are paying specifically with mill levy dollars for the schools that they send their kids to. So if they're a BBSD school, whether they're charter or traditional, they deserve the funding.
Other questions?
About 10 minutes, and then we're going to have to do some room setup changes for our board meeting. So, I mean, another option, board members, is if you just want to reflect, we can use email to ask questions also. I think one of the next steps we've talked about is sending some options over to the district accountability committee to have them weigh in. That would be a standard process for our board to use. And I think we've talked about that. What else? Anyone?
I will add that on that subject of voter intent, what the voters went to, to the polls when they authorized these mill levies is where, and what they were informed as with the voter language, and I think is really important to what they expect. And so when we see the intent of the levies, we understand that our charters serve those needs with those dollars. And so that they should, taxpayers should know that we're doing what the voters intended with, with every mill levy dollar we get. You could debate transportation a little bit. We just kind of talked about that with the technology offset. But I think the voter intent is super important here. And as a taxpayer with two school students in the district, I would be very concerned about that if there was a dramatic shift in where my mill levy dollars were going based on the board's annual priorities of their budgets. Because I would want my taxpayers to go with what I signed up for at that particular time.
Well, and I would add to that, the, when the mill levies all come up for election, and we were, we're 5 percent of the district population, we have been very proactive about informing our parent community about what the mill levy benefits would be to all the students. And so our parents, in the same vein, would be, I think, not happy to see the intent of the mill levies as they were distributed, I mean, to change midstream. And so that's essentially what would be happening. Because we communicated with our families about what it would mean for our school. And if, if we end up having to try to look at cutting things that we are currently offering, that's not going to sit well with our, with our parent community, obviously. So we're just asking for, just maintaining your current operations because we think the relationship that you have with the charters right now is very positive, right? And so we would encourage you all to think about that philosophically. What are you trying to do? What are you trying to accomplish? And how can we help? And how can we continue to be partners in service of our students that are all our students?
Any other thoughts? Well, thank you so much for coming. And then we'll figure out next steps, and it might be something through the district accountability committees. Thanks so much.
Thanks for inviting us.
Thank you.